We'll call the meeting to order. Let the record reflect, all board members present except Aaron Schute and Adam Bloom, who are not with us this evening for they have other commitments tonight. Recognition of visitors and guests. We will welcome all of you here this evening. We have several recognition items. First of all, congratulations to the boys' track team in winning the Big South Large Conference School Championship. They also went on to play second at the Minnesota State Track Meet. Abagat Opio was first place in triple jump, sixth place in the long jump. Marano Opio was fourth place in 110 meter hurdles, in fourth place in the 300 meter hurdles at 39.06 seconds, new school record. Four by 800 relay team was fourth place. Off Becca, Marky, Fanyu Wolday, Philman Wolday, and Micah Walu were the team members. The 440 relay team also come in sixth place. Michaeli Walu, Jake Consuina, Marono Opio, and Abagat Opio. Congratulations to our girls' golf team who received third place in the sections and shot their best score of the year as a team. Also, congratulations to Lily Marlberg on qualifying for the girls' state golf tournament. Congratulations to Island Barber as being named All-Conference in tennis, Tristan Suberall as Conference in baseball, and Hannah McNabb as All-Conference in softball. Congratulations to all those students. Very, very well, good job well done this year. Okay, now we go on to public participation. I've received no requests for public participation. Recognition of students, staff, and community. I guess we just done that. Recognition of tenure teachers. That is next.
Do you have a list of names?
I don't have a.
So those receiving tenure for teachers, if you guys would come over here, Mr. Lorenz will read your name, and the board members all want to line up over here to shake your hand, so.
Put on the list, you want me to?
Yeah. Go, yeah, start top. We only have five here.
Okay. We have Tony Bartman in the middle school. John Oso Arora at the high school. Rebecca Brignac at the high, at Prairie. Paul A. Brown at Prairie. Mary Deischer at the high school. Holly Finke at the Prairie. Roche Gath at middle school. Elizabeth Hawquist Prairie. Aaron Lanneman at the middle school. Jose Colazo Morelles at the high school. LJ Napton at the high school. Jenna Nelson at the high school. Kelly A. Nelson at the high school.
Thank you.
Jetsy Nitsuki at the high school. Katie Pedersen Middle School. Austin Smith Peters at the high school, and at the Learning Center. Whitney Rogers at Prairie. Michaela Schroeder at high school. Amber Tarud Middle School. And Samantha Walthowitz, I'm not sure about that name, at the Prairie. Okay, congratulations. Congratulations to all the new tenure teachers.
Good evening. The information that I just shared in the packet, sorry. The information shared, a couple important things. This is 2022 graduating class. I know sometimes it gets confusing because we just graduated a group of kids in '23. The state is always about a year behind with the grad data. Another important piece is this is Worthington High School students only and does not include the Learning Center. The state released these grad rates towards the end of April. We had been watching this class very closely due to the above-average enrollments of students during the 2018 school year when they were freshmen. Prior to the 2022 school year, our four-year grad rates typically were at about 85% over the past eight, past five years. If you look at Slide 1, the data from the class of 2022, our four-year graduation rate was 67.5. And then we're going to go over the next few slides and break down some grad rates by race and ethnicity. Slide 2 shows our subgroup of...
Just a quick question on Mr. Noble.
Sorry.
Hope, sorry to interrupt you, just on the beginning number for, did we have a...
The total number.
Yeah, like a kindergarten number, is that fair?
Yes, so beginning number would be 258 students that Mars data would show that we were essentially responsible for.
Thank you.
And that's based on students that were with us in the system or moved into our system.
Thank you.
Second slide, our Asian subgroup was at 81.1%. Pay close attention, though, that was a very small subgroup. There was only 11 students in that subgroup. The next slide was our black or African-American student subgroup. The four-year graduation rate was 93.3, another small group, 15 total students, but that is definitely a success. It's an area that the state is watching very closely. Slide 4 is our Caucasian or white students. That was at 98.5%. That was 68 total students. Moving on to Slide 5, this is our Hispanic or Latino population, had a 50% four-year grad rate, and it was a total of 160 students in that class. One important piece to, I want to show you on Slide 6, we are able to disaggregate the data and look at that Hispanic and Latino population who no longer need EL services. So students who have tested their way out of needing additional support, the state keeps those kids in that subgroup for an additional two years, but after the two years after testing out, they no longer count in that subgroup. And of those students, we had 94.3% of our Hispanic and Latino population graduate in four years. And that was still a total of 70 students. Slide 7 is an area that we, as a district, need to clearly focus on. This is our EL population. We will get into a little more detail towards the end. That group of students was 22.8% graduating in four years, and it was a total population of 101 students in that graduating class. And then Slide 8, I added one slide to look at all of our students that did not qualify for language services. And in that group, it would be 95.1% graduated in four years, and that would have been 163 students. The last page in your packet is probably, at least I believe, the most informative. When I mentioned we were watching this grade closely, we now have the capability to actually dig down deeper into who these specific students were that maybe didn't graduate on time. In the past, we'd look at percentages and kind of make school improvement plans and then move on. Now we're able to really dig into the data and figure out who they were. So of the 258 that Matt had alluded to earlier that we were technically responsible for, the 86 students that did not graduate in four years, seven of those students chose to continue. The state does continue to track and monitor the fifth, sixth, and seven-year grad rates. Obviously, we want students to graduate in four, but if they're not able to, we want to convince them to continue working towards their diploma. So we did have seven students, seven students continue. Interesting fact, those seven students were students who were within our system before high school. So we had built relationships with them either in elementary, maybe even a little bit of time in middle school. And even though they weren't able to complete their graduation in the four years, they were willing to come back this year. Four of those students chose to do that at the high school. Three of those students did that at the Learning Center. This next subgroup is the reason that we really started to watch closely. The 79 students have dropout or unknown. So if students drop out and they tell us that they're done with school, we can mark that in the Mars system as a true dropout. If they just stop coming to school, there's a 15-day drop, or some students move. Sometimes they'll even tell us where they're going, but if we do not receive records requests from another school in the system, they show up as an unknown. 72 of those 79 students, all qualified for EL services, and they joined us here at the high school during the fall of 2018. They were all tagged as freshmen due to lack of credits. The average age of those students was 17 at the time of registration, and of those students, the average amount of time that they spent in our system was eight months. A few kids chose to continue on, and they, the most was 23 months, so about two school years, there were a handful or more that were only here for a month. So the average was eight months of those 72 students. And I won't go in detail because I know Mr. Langard has a lot on the agenda as well, and I want some time to answer some questions. I did add that last piece at the bottom there. It's an important factor to know that when we really look into the data of who these kids are that are not being successful currently, it's important to point out that, at least based on this year's graduating class of 22, the students who spent any time, even at our middle school, were very successful graduating in four years. There was 96% of them who graduated on time. We clearly have work to do with the subgroup of students who move into our schools, move into our community later in their high school career, and we have a lot of credits to catch up.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Any questions?
Any questions.
The age of the students that you're talking about, average age, I think you said 17, and obviously, if we're starting as freshmen, there's an age difference, and, and obviously, they haven't had the advantage of as much education or having a good education from where they were coming to us from. Do we have, does the state have, or do we have any plans or ideas of when we get these students who come into our district to do something different with them or have more communication with them to find out their goals or what's going on? Because it sounds like, it sounds like we need to treat them differently. We can't just stick them into our system and expect them to come out the other end as successes. You know, eight months, you know, they get to be, it sounds like they turn, eight months, they're, they're, they're 18 years old, and they're on their way to wherever their life is taking them. So, you know, is there something we can do for those who do not actually have an intention of graduating, just putting in their time to get to that age of 18 or get through that one year, and then they're out the door? That we can have a different type of program for them that will give them some other life skills to make them a little more successful because we figure they're probably not going to come back?
Well, I mean, a couple things. So we definitely have started to ask more questions during our intake and registration process to really try to figure out what is the goal of some of these students. Many of these students are, they're here, they want to be in school, they want to learn the language, but they, they carry a fair amount of responsibility in terms of trying to earn money, support their family, far above what, what some of our other students deal with at age 17. I also think some of them, even during the intake, will, will share, they, they just, they do want to work, they want to learn the language, and they know in a high school is probably the fastest way for them to learn the language. But some will state that is their main goal, and it's not necessarily the diploma itself. So they value the education and understanding how to navigate working and living in our community and learning the language, the value of a high school diploma at that point in their life. This is something we need to continue to work on, helping them understand.
Part, part of too, that goes along with that is getting some of these students probably, not only the relationship to try and keep them, but also the opportunity to give them job skills. So whether it's career and technical ed type skills or those types of abilities to earn an appropriate living.
A high majority of those 79-ish students that we're talking about as well, most of the students who at least came in the fall of 2018 arrived without parents. They, they moved in with a sponsor, they had adult support here, but it was not their parents.
Any further questions for Josh?
Mr. Chairman. You talked about this particular class being followed. Is the same attention being given to the next classes or a plan as to how to reevaluate what numbers and how you're going to keep track of that?
I think now that we, we know that these are things we need to continue to work on, so they're part of our school improvement efforts. How do we engage quicker? How do we help them connect with our high school, get them courses, potentially even CTE-type courses, but also credit-bearing courses quicker? I do think for some of these students, had we been able to find ways to get them into credit-bearing courses, they would have stuck it out for a longer period of time. I would argue that the ones who chose to give up in a month, there was very little we could have done with scheduling and supports that quickly to really help them engage. That's more about really getting to know them on the front end and, and understanding what is their goal, what, what are they registering for, type of a deal. But I, yes, we will watch the data and disaggregate it like this from now on.
Do we have the, the ability to customize the education? I mean, if, if you're able to, I mean...
To a point. You know, you will hear the MDE talk a lot about world's best workforce, they will really push CTE-type programming. At the very same time, they have the academic standards that are required. So to fit all of that together, especially to a 17-year-old learning the language, brand-new to community, to make all of that fit within that timeframe is extremely difficult. And I do think if we were given a little more freedom to say, this is more of a CTE track, and we can not worry as much about some of the academic standards and requirements, it might hook more of these types of students.
Mr. Chairman, Josh, do you think the eight months, the average, you know, it's like you said, one was here for one month, is that a skewed number where there are quite a few that only stuck it out for a month?
With the eight-month average that they stayed?
Yeah, right, so...
I just, I took all of those 75 students and looked at when they registered and when they left.
Okay.
And it was an average of all of those 70-some kids were here about eight months. But it was interesting data because, like I said, some stayed for almost two full years, and others were leaving within a month. So it was just a total average of all of those, that population.
Okay, any further questions for Josh?
The, I understand the state sets certain standards, but when a student leaves, it doesn't matter what standards they set, they're not going to meet any of them anyway.
Sure.
I would rather say to heck with the state and their standards and say, what can we do to help that student while they're here? If their English language, obviously, we want to make sure that they, their language skills improve, and then help them with other types of skills that they can use when they get out of here. Now, if they're serious about getting their, their degree or coming back there and getting a GED, obviously, we want to make sure they pick up all the classes that they can. But if the, if, if we're finding that the, the majority of these students aren't graduating, and our best education, I think, would be not to worry about that the state wants you to have a history and a geography and other, and base, and gear it more personally toward them and what it is that they need to get, so when they do decide that's enough for me, you know, we've given the best we can. As I say, they're not going to get those other classes if they drop out anyway, so, so I wouldn't worry about that. I would think we should worry about what they can get, what we can give them, and what we can do. And maybe if they get that stuff first, we might have a better chance of keeping them later on to pick up some of the other stuff to, to actually graduate.
Currently, currently, these students, their schedule would be very English-language heavy.
Yeah.
Trying to build up basic language skills as quickly as possible. But you're right, our mindset is, can we build up the language supports with the student, but also in other classrooms where we can move them into other courses as quickly as possible? And then we could look at, well, what courses would be more appropriate?
Yeah, you know, maybe, maybe we don't push the classes that they have no interest in or bore them, or they don't really care about, you know, and I'm sure a lot of students say, I wish I could do that too. But in this case, I think, I think we need to look at it a little bit differently, or at least to see what we can do to entice them to stay as long as possible and, and help them as much as we can. And if they're not here, we can't do it. So our first goal should be to keep them here, and what do we need to do to that, and thin out the things that aren't benefiting them and keeping them around.
Okay, any further questions for Josh? This is annual report, kind of, or what? We have this report once a year.
We'll, we'll be shooting for that, yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Josh, for the presentation. Moving on to approval of agenda, 2.1 consent agenda, we have three items to add. We're going to add 4.333, approve employment of Ashley Yeski as school social worker at the intermediate school. 4.334, approve employment of Clara Fuentes and Serventis as science teacher at the high school. And 4.335, approve employment of Megan Martin as third-grade teacher at the intermediate school. We'll add those three items to the consent agenda. 2.2 is the main agenda. As listed. So I need a motion to approve both the consent and the main agenda with the three items added.
Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda with the additions and the main agenda as listed.
Second? Motion by Lori, second by Matt, to approve the agenda as listed. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.0 approval of minutes.
ISO moved approval of minutes for 3.1 and 3.2.
Okay, motion by Tom.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Lori to approve minutes, 3.1 and 3.2. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 4.0, the consent agenda, we will now approve the items on the consent agenda.
So move, Steve.
Motion by Steve, second by Lori, to approve the items on the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 5.0, main agenda, 5.1, monthly financial overview.
So in the monthly financial overview, you should have received the 5.1.1. If you look at the revenues, we're running slightly below last year's numbers, but it's relatively close within a percent, so kind of on target there for the budget. When you get down to the expenditures, you'll see we're running about 1% of the higher than the prior year. Overall, it's on target, and of course, we're in the last month, so there'll be a lot of year-end wrap-up expenditures, including salaries. So overall, the budget's on target, amendments have been done, and we should be able to wrap up the year in pretty good shape, as based on the budget.
Okay, any questions for John? Hearing none, we'll move on to 5.2. Approved resolutions establishing a combined polling place for certain multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling place will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. So we need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the combined polling place.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Tom, to approve the resolution of combining polling places. Any discussion?
We have this, I'm assuming, all approved by the Lakeside Church. I think you've got a polling place during normal elections and stuff, so.
Yep. One polling place. One, yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Local.
Okay.
Mr. Lawrence.
Aye.
Mr. Frims.
Aye.
Mr. Woodboom.
Aye.
Motion carries. 5.3, approve 23, 24 preliminary budget.
So this was presented to the Operations Committee. You will see that there's been some revisions, but this is the month you have to approve the preliminary budget so that we can have expenditures in July. And you can see that the initial budgets, $68.8 million, and expenditures are expected to reach $69.5 million. So again, slightly overexpending based on what was presented. Operations Committee recommended approval.
Okay, we need a motion. Need a motion?
So move, Steve.
Motion by Steve.
I'll second.
Second by Lori to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve five-point-four, approve committed fund balance for severance.
If you look in the documents, the committed fund balance, if you remember, a number of years ago was actually probably, close to twenty years ago, was up in the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar range. Now it's ten thousand dollars. So not a very big committed balance anymore.
I move approval of the committed fund balance for severance.
Second?
Motion made and second to approve the committed fund balance for severance in amount of ten thousand dollars. Any discussion?
Is this about the last year of this? Are we close? Couple employees left?
One.
Okay. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five-point-five, approve student expulsion.
I move the approval of the expulsion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any discussion? This is a roll-call vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Five-point-six, approve resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits for candidacy. This is a normal filing period?
Yeah. It has to do with filling the vacant seat, which would be effective January of twenty-four.
I move approval of the resolution establishing the dates for the filing affidavits for the candidacy.
Second?
Motion by Lori, second by Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Resolution, yeah.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Five-point-seven, approve resolution calling for special election to fill school board vacancy.
I move approval of calling for the special election for the school board vacancy.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Tom. This is a roll-call vote.
Aye.
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 Mr. Wedbourn. Aye.
Motion carries. Five-point-eight, approve resolution approving tax abatement for a certain property pursuant to Minnesota statute four-sixty-nine.
I so move for the tax abatement.
Second?
Second by Tom, second by Matt to approve the tax abatement request resolution. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Five-point-nine, approve changes to twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar.
So with that, there would be staff development changes in relationship to meeting what the legislature passed regarding reading. And it would be early dismissals, and it would be on December thirteenth, March sixth, April seventeenth, and May twenty-second. We're actually ahead in our training compared to a lot of school districts. This allows us to continue that momentum that was there. Mr. Noble could maybe add some things if you have questions.
What's the name of the program, the reading program? I've heard it a couple times, or the acronym?
The Science of Reading Training. It's through letters.
Letters?
Yeah.
Okay.
Letters training. We'll have three full-time trainers that will work with our district. Initially, we were already moving to, we had two trainers in place to work with our K-through-three teachers and some of our EL and special ed teachers. When the READ Act was approved, it requires that all EL, all sped, and actually, ELA teachers in middle schools and high schools receive that training as well. We wouldn't necessarily need to do it next year, but we know districts will be trying to find trainers. So because we had a connection already with two, we added another one. We had ways to make it work with the other buildings where students could have stayed in session. We could have used paras and different support staff to have students stay in school while teachers were trained. Now, with the vast number of teachers being trained, those four half-days are pretty essential where students would just go home so teachers can receive that training.
So letters training.
Okay. We need a motion?
So move, Wedbourn.
I'll second.
Motion made and second to approve changes to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Five-point-ten, approve to hire additional boys soccer coach.
This was presented to the Instructional Committee. We have large numbers in the boys' soccer program, so when they work at the varsity, there's about probably another forty-five to fifty athletes that they need to work with, and doesn't work well with one coach. So trying to get a second one there. And the committee recommended approval.
I move approval to hire an additional boys soccer coach.
Second?
Motion by Lori, second by Matt, to approve to hire another additional soccer coach. This is going to be posted then currently. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve out-of-state professional development request.
This wasn't presented at the Instructional. Usually it is, but it came in last minute, and it was a change to sending Mr. Langseth to the Character Strong National Conference. It works out because that's the program or curriculum that we're utilizing across the district to help meet students' social-emotional needs. And this works out well to get him the train. It's relatively the same cost as the training he was going to. So I would recommend approval.
I move approval of out-of-state professional development for Mr. Langseth.
Second?
By Lori. Second by Tom, to approve the recommended action. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approve contract agreements.
So I have ten different contract agreements that need approval for the district translators, multilingual coordinator, IT coordinator, licensed coordinators at community ed, communication coordinator, enrichment coordinator, youth development staff, NCIC, youth development staff, NCIC cultural liaisons, staff development, data assessment coordinator, and curriculum school improvement coordinator. The three that are not completed at this time are community education director, technology director, and teachers association. I can go through each of the percentages, but I know you have a piece of paper, so I keep it moving if you want. Some of the percentages look higher. I'll tell you that some, there were days added. On a couple contracts, a couple, we hired people lower than we probably should have. So it's a correcting factor to get them up where they need to be based on a variety of comparisons that we do, and it's an alignment issue to get some of this corrected. So you'll see a wide variety of percentages. Example might be the NCIC youth development staff, and they're compared to another set that are part of the district, so.
Any, yeah, okay, we need a motion. You can approve all at once, correct?
You can approve them all at once, or individual ones if you want to go? Or if you've got questions, I'll answer them individually.
I'll make a motion to approve the salaries and benefits for negotiation settlements as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Lori, to approve the ten agreements that are listed. Any discussion? I just wanted to say that John's done a lot of this work and has met with all these employees. Puts a lot of time on it, and he's negotiated a lot of this himself. We have to prove it, of course. And the speed of these have been updated to bring them up to speed where they should be, so. So I think it's a fair agreement, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Going on to reports. Instruction Committee.
So I'll cover a couple things. The first one, easy, we have twenty certified staff positions open. I do want to kind of give you a heads-up. I'm going to probably increase the signing bonuses for a few of these tough to fill, really need a teacher in his classroom. So I'm looking at, for some of these, example, intermediate special education, I'm looking at doing a ten-thousand-dollar signing bonus. We really need to get one special ed teacher. The other ones that are high priority is elementary music. High school needs a language arts teacher. And then we have what I'll call some secondary, probably. Elementary, probably needs a music teacher as well. We need a C-team, special ed C-team teacher. So we have some higher priority positions that we'll be looking to try and get filled. And our timeframe is getting short. So. Second item I had on here was the work session agenda. And on there, the agenda has gotten rather long. We can try and cover as much as we can try and cover, but some of those things, I thought tonight would be a good time if you want to move some of these off or you want to create more focus on some of them. Some of them are probably more question and answer than maybe, I'm not seeing that as a potential change, but it is a conversation that probably needs to be had. So if you look at it, if you have suggestions, thoughts, now would be the time to, excuse me, address that.
Chairman, a question. Do we typically have just one work session during the year?
We schedule them as need be.
So we could just move some of these items to us?
If we don't get through them all?
Just carry to the next.
We can carry them on to the next one.
Are these, are these in a priority manner? Or like if we do that, get to the ones that are the priority on this list or move them around and?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Chair. I was going to suggest the same thing, and if we maybe prioritize the ones that are really important and we want to get through, others are probably just for discussion and such, and we go through what we can, and we get to a point where it's getting late or it takes longer than we anticipated, we could always just stop and then leave the others go to another meeting at another time. Some of them, like the Krausheim Road, the legislations, you know, I mean, it's good to hear about legislation and things coming up and stuff like that, but a lot of that's not really going to have a lot of effect on us here for a while. So those are some things, I think, if we didn't get to them, we could wait. Some of the other ones, I think you have up to the top already, are things we probably really should be talking about at this point. So that'd be my suggestion, leave them on the agenda so we know they're there and just go through what we can. And if we get to a certain point where it gets late or we get tired of discussing things, we can just stop and leave the rest for a later time.
Okay. So you want to kind of prioritize these for the work session or?
You can, or I'll go through, or you can send me your priority item and I'll highlight them. Maybe I'll send a quick note out, and each board member can send me their one priority or one section of priority. We have to go through the action plan. So that's number one. That's my priority.
I'm thinking perhaps we just have you prioritize them, as you've heard the input from people, questions and such, and run them down, then maybe send out the new proposed agenda, and if anybody has any concerns about something that they think should be moved up on the list, because it's that important, and so they can then comment about it.
Okay. I'll prioritize them. I'll readjust, or I'll have Lisa readjust.
One question, John, the operating referendum, should that be done sooner than later?
So my recommendation on the operating referendum, as you get into the conversation, we have to do it, if you plan to use your board authority, you have to do it before June fifteenth of two thousand twenty-four. I would actually tell you that my recommendation would be to do it this fall and just get things moving, one thing out of the way. So I'd like to see it done in October.
I think that's something that would be higher up on the list, that we would need to get to. I don't think it's going to take a long time for us to come up with what to do with it at this point. So I don't, I think that's going to be up further on the list, get it done and get away, and I think that's an important one that we should know where we stand on it.
Well, I know we did the preliminary budget tonight and approved that for next year. Is there, I know, and we'll make amendments to it, so maybe an overview of what it's going to be or what the money and where the funding is going to be so we can make a good decision about that, if the operating referendum is going to be enough at leaving it as is, or if we're going to have to come back to the voters in a couple of years or an overall picture of what that looks like.
I've already talked to Mr. Marview about that one sheet. Look out. Kind of a quick way to look at it. So I've already, he's working on it.
Okay. I like that prioritized.
So the operating referendum gets renewed automatically for ten years if we so decide to, right? If we want to approve the referendum, operating referendum, it stays the same for ten years. So in three years, if we want to increase it, we can come back and?
You have to hold an election.
So you increase the one that's already there, or we have another referendum?
It would be a brand-new.
Then this one expires, and or we cancel? It'd be above and beyond this one then?
It'd be above and beyond this one. So example, you know preschool, and there's some additional funding if you follow the revenue short, and you want to increase the budget, a hundred dollars per pupil unit to cover preschool costs. Well, in two years, you could hold an election for a hundred dollar per pupil. That would be for other potential operating costs and preschool operating costs, as an example.
But the current one would still be in place.
The current one would still be in place. They're just, you'd have offsetting referendum.
And that's why I think we ought to have it up further on, make sure we get to that one on our work session. Get those questions answered, know where we're going to stand and where we're going to go with it.
I'll do a little prioritizing and.
Okay. You can send out a list and so we can review it.
Last thing I wanted to cover before we quit, and I'll try and do it relatively quick, was negotiations with the teaching staff. If you remember, typically, I've done kind of a summary and up- If you remember, typically, I've done kind of a summary and update. So, with that, the teachers have Article Five, which is teacher rights. We tentatively agreed to that change, it's kind of old language, and some changes based on legislation. Extra compensation, which is the national board certification, they want to see an increase in that pay, that currently we only have, I think it's four teachers that are nationally board certified. With that in there, they had eyeglass benefit, we were at a hundred dollars for if a student damaged a teacher's glasses, we'd reimburse a hundred. They're asking for full replacement. Leaves of absence, they wanted to add inclement weather and accidents to that emergency leave. Personal leave, they found a spelling error, not a big one. On unused days, they wanted to be paid out at their daily rate. IEP management for special ed, they had some language regarding that. EL access test preparation as well. Length of school year, they wanted to have one full day of in the classroom work time, one afternoon and one morning, not on the same day. They did have class size language, as well as pay for being above that. On the teacher severance side, it's really now a four oh three B matching program. They increased the number of, the various numbers, as well as the dollar amounts on those. And then on the four oh three B, they automatic, wanted an auto enrollment, not responsibility of the teacher to select to participate. And then there was a written notification for late resignations they had in there. On special assignments, they wanted, oh, excuse me, yeah, on special assignments, rather than what we use as the summer school, after school, they wanted daily rate versus what a specific number we've set. On the community ed licensed teachers, which is early childhood and ABE, they wanted to get rid of the, a lot of that language for pay, which again, we will be doing that because the legislature passed that. And then they had some, one extracurricular for winter dance competition JV coach position. And of course, that was that. Their request for increase in compensation, which includes some of the language compensation, was twenty point six five percent, which did not include the class size language, and when we kind of estimate, we are closer to twenty-seven percent request. So that's where the teachers association was on ours. In our part of it, we had part-time benefits, we did a cleanup of some language. Also cleanup on internal sub-coverage, as it was intended two years, or two years ago when we negotiated. Contributions for health insurance, there was a duplicate of some language, so we asked to remove some of that. The district proposed personal leave changes, and allowed them to take it in one-hour increments. Likewise, on DDUCK language, we tried to put a little stronger language to help control. We want our staff in the classrooms, working with kids, not gone. And then approval for leave of absence, there was a sentence where we put in to address some of that. Teacher severance, which is the old severance language, is no longer needed in the contract because the last teacher that was under that retired this year. And then slight adjustments in the four oh three B language proposed from the district. Likewise, adjustments on activity association language. Late resignation, we added a sentence related to that. And then Schedule E, special assignments, removing North Central accreditation visitation, that's really old language, so we actually got a tentative agreement on that one. And then we will have a memorandum of understanding for the vibe teachers, which is part of that. And the district's proposal for financial improvement was right at about seven percent for the two years. We did propose two different pay structures, the current pay structure and one without a schedule. So, that'll, I guess I should say six point nine four percent to be accurate. So, that's the overview of where negotiations is at with teachers association. Next meeting is Monday, the twenty-sixth, at nine AM. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John. Instructional Committee report.
Everything's been covered tonight, except one thing, Spencer Winnicky from the Learning Center did come to the meeting and present a new schedule, some schedule changes for the Learning Center, just some things that he thinks is going to work a little bit better for them, and other than that, everything else has been covered.
Any questions for Laurie? Thank you, Laurie. Operational Committee?
We talked a little bit, or got an update on the, on the new holiday, Juneteenth, or the nineteenth of June. We also talked a little bit about the Krausheim project, out the improvement project the county has, has decided not to move forward on at this point. And we also, it was in the, in the agenda, for the consent agenda, was the Minnesota Rural Education Association membership due, is to continue our membership in that, which was approved tonight.
Okay, any questions for Steve? Hearing none, any other reports? Other business, work session were scheduled for July sixth at five thirty, the district office, in the big, large, in the new office area, the large conference room, our first workshop there, on July sixth at five thirty. Any other future business? Hearing none, we'll call the meeting adjourned.